None, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Do we need to excuse Councilmember Shaw?
I was just gonna make a comment that she's trying to join. Yeah, so we'll excuse her if we can't get her in.
Next item is pledge allegiance. Will everybody stand and join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item on the agenda is I'm gonna move up. But nobody disagrees, the presentations for the Halloween costume contest winners. Move that up. Right now, who's overseeing that? Austin?
Yeah, he ran downstairs to get more people. Sorry, I didn't thought he would be upstairs by then.
We can just come right back to it.
Yeah, we'll come right back to it when Austin gets back up here.
I move we approve tonight's agenda?
Second.
Motion was made seconded to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Do you have none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Let me do the consent agenda too.
Yeah.
Go totally out of order?
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna keep going out of order tonight. I move that we approve tonight's consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the November 8th meeting and council payable and payroll.
Second.
Motion was made seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Do you have none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Austin. Where are you?
His defense elevator was extra slow today.
Yeah, the elevator got stuck. Okay, is there any public comments? Anyone from the public wanna? Speak?
It's moving.
I hear the elevator. Okay. Wait a second here for the elevator. He's not in there.
Mayor's report is next.
Mayor's report, again. It's not something I was thinking of, and I forgot to. Hmm. Okay, moving on to council reports.
Mayor Shape, is it okay if we just, if I make a motion to excuse Councilmember Shaw? She cannot get in because of technology tonight.
Motion was made and seconded to excuse Councilmember Shaw. She's not able to get her computer in. Any discussion? Do you have none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any other council reports? Go ahead.
Um. I've been in touch with the county assessor's office. They've helped put together a spreadsheet of information for me, and I'm going to be digging into it as a major project at the start of the first of the year to look at the downtown area as defined, as typically defined, and really analyze to be able to answer the question of how much property is unutilized, underutilized, deteriorated, vacant, et cetera. And be presenting some reports to the council sometime next year.
Sounds like a good project. So we're gonna move back to the presentations of the Halloween costume contest winners. Are you ready, Austin? Okay.
Candy.
Been a couple weeks.
Testing. Okay, there we go. There we go. Okay, so my name is Austin Weber, and I'm with the Aberdeen Parks and Rec Department. So we've been doing this costume contest for many years. Lately, we've been hosting it with Moyer Multimedia and the Downtown Aberdeen Association. So this is a really cool event for the kids in Aberdeen and elsewhere. So I think we had about 200 or so kids that came through and got their picture taken. So the special individuals with us are the actual winners of our costume contest. So again, over 200 kids, so they are the special group. So you guys will learn about the costumes that they wore to win the contest here. So we do have five categories, and you guys will hear them as I call them up individually to get their pictures taken. So the scariest costume contest winner was Chucky, and it was Penelope Smith who won that one. So Penelope, come on up. Give her a round of applause. Okay, the next winner was the cutest costume winner, and it is The Devil by Lola K. All right, our next winner was a duo, and so they were Monsters Avery and Harbor Finn. Please come on up.
Well, now get your picture.
Okay, our next winner is, was our judge's favorite costume, and that is Boo from Monsters Inc. Her name is Annabelle McBeaters. Come on out.
Come on, let's go this way. You guys take a picture.
Get your picture taken.
You want to give your picture?
One, two, three. Thank you.
Okay, and last but not least, our fan favorite that was voted on by Facebook, so most popular, was Wednesday Addams by Nettie Boetman. Thank you, guys, and give one more round of applause for our winners, please.
That was great. Lots of fun. We were out giving away candy, and I got to see a lot of the costumes. It was awesome. Lot of fun, lot of kids having a lot of fun. All right, we're moving down to staff reports. City Administrator?
Just to add to what the mayor was saying, we did hand out candy, but Chief Green was the most popular person to hand out candy. The rest of us just looked like people standing there. Yeah. Just a reminder, we had an open house for the levy project. FEMA hosted an open house last week, and we had good turnout. There is an online open house, a virtual open house that it will be open until December 21st. So anyone that would like to deliver comment, they're able to do that on this virtual, it's on the website. It's also on the levy website as well as to where this is hosted. Or if anyone needs to find that, please let me know, or if you have a constituent that wants to deliver comment, please send them my way, and I can get them the link to be able to do that.
The city website or the FEMA website?
I believe it's on, we have it on the city website under Public Works. If we don't, I could definitely, I believe it's on there, but the project itself also has a web, a website, a project website as well. So was that, yeah. So, but staff will be coming back in January. I know that we'll have new council members, so staff will be back in January to give like an update on, just to kind of brief on all things the levier infrastructure projects as well. So had a great meeting today with the county commissioners to talk about homeless shelters and to just kind of talk about a partnership and what that could look like in the future. We also had a meeting with the city of Tacoma regarding the Wainute Dam. So our, we are co-licenses with the city of Tacoma. The city owns the dam, but we are co-licenses for the operations of the dam. And so that will be coming, license renewal will be coming up to 2037, but the process could take eight years or more. So just an FYI, we are beginning the process very early, starting in 2025. And then upcoming, we have a meeting with the Department of Commerce. I scheduled a meeting with them. They actually will be using our committee room to do a meet, to do, because they all work remotely, so they'll be meeting here in Aberdeen for a few hours. And then they're going to, they've asked the city to give them a tour of prospective homeless projects that we would like to engage in. So they just kind of want to see what's happening in Grace Harbor. They are also gonna meet with CAF to look at some of the projects that they have going on here. So I think that's a really good opportunity. The county commissioners had expressed an interest in joining us on that tour, but I would like to open it up to any council members that would like to join us as well. So I can, if you're interested in joining us, again, that'll be in the beginning of December, and so I can add you to the list and send you that calendar invite, so you have that there. Otherwise, are there any questions? Yeah.
Well. Bruce, I know that you're aware that there was some fairly negative input from some citizens for during the FEMA levy presentation, yeah, open house. Is the city of Aberdeen going to put together any kind of meetings, open house, project reviews where citizens can again come and actually have their questions addressed and have some, see some kind of presentation on the project? Have a better understanding of it?
So the open house, I think there was, so that open house was FEMA's open house. And the open house forum, I think that attendees thought it would be an open forum, so they thought that they would have a platform to speak as opposed to just kind of coming in and seeing open house are kind of different that way. But yes, I did talk, we did receive the feedback, and I did speak with Director Sanger, our city engineer Nick Bird, and the mayor. We just, we briefly discussed it today. We're still going, it's still an ongoing conversation to to get, to get citizens what the information that they need and they want. So we are still kind of discussing that.
Right. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes?
I had a question about where we are with the negotiating a new contract when it's not LeMay anymore.
Waste Connections?
Waste Connections.
They still operate under LeMay. They do business as LeMay.
Okay.
Oh, you're, that's, that's the end of the question. It is under review with our legal team right now.
And at what point will that come to council for review?
They're pretty quick at turning things around, so my hope is maybe at the next council meeting, maybe the first. Well, that's next week. Well, the next council meeting is ideally when we would have it, depending on how long it takes them to turn around.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's, it's pretty much finalized, other than the review.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Any other directors? Okay. Moving on to requests for council action, Finance Committee Chair report, report by House Member Cedar.
Thank you, Mayor. We have report, we have a request from Finance and the Parks Director recommending that the city council authorize the mayor to sign the Recreation and Conservation Office grant agreement. I move that we accept this report.
Second.
Motion was made seconded to accept this report. Is there any discussion?
I'd.
Go ahead.
This was addressed at the Finance Committee tonight, and some questions were answered. This is about $100,000 grant, and as I understand it, we came to understand it's pretty broad and pretty open as to what can be used for. They'll be using it for supplies and things that they needed to fund, and we won't have to worry about covering that under the general fund.
Yeah, I think there was even some uh baseball bases for the baseball parks, things like that that are hard to budget for, that they always want to replace, that they struggle to get them replaced, and so this grant will serve items like that.
We're always open to taking free money.
Yeah. Okay. Is there a motion?
There wasn't one.
Okay. All in favor of this report, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Under ordinances and resolutions, with the third reading and final passage of Bill 2314, an ordinance adopting a supplemental budget to change the 2023 appropriations and expenditures, I move that we adopt the passage of this ordinance.
Second.
Motion was made seconded to adopt this ordinance into final passage. Is there any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Ellis?
Yes.
Francie?
Yes.
Gaken?
Yes.
Catchman?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Cedar?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passes ten to zero. Mr. Mayor, this will be ordinance number 6704.
Thank you.
And we have third reading and final passage of Bill 2315, an ordinance providing for the 2024 levy upon taxable property within the city of Aberdeen. I move that we adopt the final passage of this bill.
Second.
Motion was made seconded to adopt the third reading of this bill. Is there any discussion? Do you have none? Roll call, please.
Ellis?
Yes.
Francie?
Yes.
Gaken?
Yes.
Catchman?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Cedar?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passes. Mr. Mayor, this will be ordinance 6705.
Thank you.
And preliminary or Robert's Rules of Order, I'm not sure how to address this one. We have the third reading and final passage of Bill 2316, but we have some new information that we want to propose. So I guess what I'm really proposing is that we table the third reading and final passage of Bill 2316. Is that the correct motion?
You can table or take no action, kind of whichever flavor you want to go.
I want to table it until the next council meeting, which will be next week.
Yeah.
Right? To, the ordinance adopting the preliminary 2024 budget, and we can review under the discussion of the parameters for that.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Second.
Motion was made seconded. You table the third reading of the preliminary bud, 2024 budget until next council meeting. Is there any discussion? Under discussion?
Mr. Mayor and council, the mayor and the city administrator and the directors were asked to look at the general fund portion of the budget that's proposed for 2024 and come back to council with a 5% reduction in expenditures. They put their heads together, and they also went to the directors, and they came up with a couple of options and also a blended option that kind of looks at both of those alternatives. And then the Finance Committee met tonight, and we also kind of proposed an option to be considered, which I guess would be option number four, which we'd really like to have the council give serious consideration to. And we can review and discuss any questions. We can address any questions the council members may have. Obviously, we want to give you time to review all of these proposals and options and to address, you know, any questions that you may have. That's why we're asking for this to be tabled until next week.
We also want to present a clean budget, whatever options are, you know, that we remove from the budget that are impacting the general fund. We just want to present a clean document so that you're not looking at like 20 different amendments, and that we want to bring one document.
The money's there. To clarify, the numbers that are presented on here are reductions to the budgeted expenditures. So in other words, whatever is shown, the dollar figure, that will be taken out of the budget. We'll propose not to spend those funds.
And in the memo that was provided, there are some recommendations that include, so like in the third option, it was recommended that we not kick the can down the road when it comes to the payment of the chassis for the fire truck and the police car, to use armory money to pay for those types of expenditures. It really doesn't solve anything to delay those types of payments because those are needed equipment. And the cost of a chassis down the road, it might be 350 today, but given the car industry and the direction that they're headed, the cost might be more. So those are the types of considerations that we went into. I mean, the directors did a really, really wonderful job, you know, trying to cut as much as they could. As you can see, we froze an HR tech position. We also froze a lieutenant position. So they really did make a good faith effort to look at that. We also would be moving elevator funds from the general fund to a REIT fund, which is a real estate excess, XX tax fund that we have that we collect from the state. That would lighten the load. So yeah, I think that they, they made a really good effort. Court security, we did cut that. That was even something that the judge came up with that she could, she could cut because they are still virtual for the most part, and then they're, they, when they have in, in, in-person trials, that's when they, they would need it, and I think that we, we figured out a solution for that. The Portland Lou, as you can see, there are some, in, in the memo that I sent out, there's some options for it being funded at 125. The Portland Lou's around about 250,000. CAP has tentatively, you know, we were in talks with CAP, they've tentatively agreed to go half on one. I just spoke with the library, Timberland Regional Library last week. They are having a very, very difficult time maintaining their restrooms, and they are open to also splitting a Portland Lou with us as well. So I just want to let you know, I'm always looking for ways to creatively, you know, save the city money. And then also, like with the homeless shelter, you know, the mayor and I and our option, we kept it in there, and as you can see, the directors and the third option also include the removal of the homeless shelter. So I think, I think we have a good idea. The Finance Committee also created another sheet that created a fourth option for all of you to consider. And so if, if there are any questions at all, I'm very happy to answer those questions. Oh, yeah.
I can say my most important part of this is to have a Portland Lou downtown.
Right. The things like the Portland Lou and the shelter and anything homeless related, those came from community, you know, surveys and dialogue and things like that, so, and the, and the business community as well.
And, and it was also noted that a number of the things for the parks, the utility trailer, business supplies, perks improvements, those items, the director recommended removing them from the budget, and Finance agreed at the suggested levels because those can be covered under this new RCO grant that they're going to get, that we approved tonight. There's no reason to leave them everything in the budget.
Okay, then other discussion, Councilmember Ellis.
Yeah. So. Is my mic on?
It's, it's, because it has to be. It can't be.
We had a really good discussion in the Finance Committee meeting tonight. And first of all, I want to thank my fellow committee members for, we all have been really digging into this. It's important to all of us that the city's living within its means and that the trend is looking very hopeful. Initially, we were looking at a deficit of around 3.2 million, but the actual is going to be more like around 1.5 million. This this will really help get us to a balanced budget. Not this year, but next year it will be a whole lot easier and less painful, given these steps. And, and I also want to thank staff and the city administrator and mayor because you all worked so hard to get us a preliminary budget and then to have to go back and tweak it some more. What you came up with was were three options that were, that's what we needed to have to, to get to our number four. So I think we're headed in the right direction, and I hope council takes a look at this, and any questions get addressed before our next meeting so that we can keep the budget process moving forward. I think we're, we're we're gonna end the year in a we're going to end the year in a really good place.
Um, also, we will be um, implementing a hiring freeze for, um, we'll have HR Director Danny Smith and I will be kind of figuring out how that will look with, when it comes to critical positions. We're going to tier them to figure out which ones can be frozen, especially those that are open at this point. Um, and then the directors also explored revenue um, goals for next year, so they are looking, they're you know, they're looking at all their contracts that they have currently out. They are um, looking for the ways that the city might be like hemorrhaging money like unknowingly, you know, in these, in different contracts that we might have that may not benefit the city or that may not be in the city's favor, to just kind of maybe renegotiate, renegotiate those and revisit them. Um, so it's, this has been a really, really important exercise. I think this will really help um, our team in the long run um, and help the city in the long run and understand how to be more um, fiscally disciplined when it comes to the budget. And and I think that even from the count for the council, I think that this this process has been really um, informative and enlightening. I feel like all, everyone has had a hand in kind of creating this, including the community through surveys and and discussion, so, thank you.
Uh, under discussion still, uh, Council President Catchman.
Yeah, so just a question about next steps. Um, which of these options is going to be brought forward next week, or is it still going to be open for discussion? Like, are we supposed to discuss which one we're leaning towards? Because it'd be nice to have something solidified, like on paper.
Um, I think when we bring it off the table next week, um, the recommendation likely will be to approve option four from the finance committee, but then it will be open to amendments. I'm assuming that this sounds like a reasonable course of action. Open to amendments from council members as they go through line by line, line by line.
So should we request to the city that they mock up the budget and with option four?
That would be on the finance committee's recommendation.
Okay. Do you need a motion for that, or?
No.
Okay, cool.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, the motion is to table until the next meeting. Is there any discussion for that? Any further? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
I'm moving on to public safety. Chair report by Councilmember Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, our committee has this evening at six o'clock, and we have just a couple of reports from the chiefs um, from the firing department. Um, they don't have anything on the agenda tonight, and they are working on updating their webpage. Um, it's undergoing an extensive overhaul, and the goal is to have a new updated website page by the end of next month. So that's exciting for them. And just a reminder to everybody, with the holidays coming up, um, in thinking of fires, please be careful in the kitchen. Keep an eye on things you're cooking. Don't walk away from the stove. If you decide to do a turkey in a deep dryer outside, make sure you stay safe. Keep it away from the um, buildings and do not leave it unattended. Just a quick reminder for everyone, so hopefully they won't be busy that day. And from the police department, um, we have one item on the agenda tonight. Um, the activity reports, calls for twenty-twenty-three are up to twenty-nine thousand one hundred. It's still just a little bit under last year's graphic brackets and numbers. There are twenty-three positive arrests for the professional narcotics and federal harassment in August. The Aberdeen, Hope, and Cosmopolis Police Departments are hosting a citizens academy in January through April twenty-twenty-four. The academy will meet weekly for two hours, and detailed information is available on the Facebook page. And encourage any council members that may be interested as well as citizens and our community. And personnel-wise, they have two officers, um, two candidates that have conditional offers, and they're working on their backgrounds, and the process is expected to last until January, and then they have two additional candidates to go out when the current batch of backgrounds are completed, so. Those are the reports from our chiefs. And on the agenda, we have one report. And we have a request from Public Safety and the Chief of Police recommending that the City Council approve the request to surplus the used Glock seventeen handgun with um, blue gold, I can't, I'm sorry, can't.
The opponent.
Blue gold, thank you. RDS and flashlight two gunner on for sale and transferred to retired officer. I will be adopting this report.
Second?
Motion was made seconded to adopt this report. Is there any discussion? Steve? Oh, Councilmember Ellis.
Um, I'll be voting no on this. Um, guns have been, are being used to replace civil conversations. They're used to symbolize family units. And they're too readily available um, for those who commit crimes. And my personal preference is that, um, we, the city, not put more guns out into the public, private sector. Um, I'll be voting no. Would you like to respond? I know this is a common practice when someone retires from the police department. I understand.
I certainly appreciate your opinion. Um, yeah, I mean, it's going to the hands for retired police officer who is highly trained and very responsible.
Hmm. Any other discussion? Councilmember Seedorf?
I'd much rather have a gun like this in the hands, like the chief says, of a trained, um, experienced officer um, as a citizen than just a general citizen.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Moving on to Public Works, Chair Report from me, Councilmember Lawrence.
Okay, we have, uh, try to get to the page. We have a report, uh, request from Public Works and the Public Works Director recommending that the City Council authorize the mayor to execute the agreement with Gordon Thomas Honeywell for State and Federal Government Affairs Services for the contract cycle of twenty-twenty-four through twenty-twenty-five to continue partnering with the City of Hope, promoting the joint legislative plan for the Aberdeen Hope and Blood Protection Project and the US toll highway rails, rail separation project. I, who that we adopt this for? Second?
Motion was made seconded to adopt this report. Is there any discussion? Think everybody's well aware how successful thi- this endeavor has been. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
Okay, we have uh, one more thing, ordinance, third reading and final passage of Bill twenty-three dash seventeen. An ordinance authorized in the final adoption of an updated shoreline master program and adopting amendments to AMC fourteen point five zero, the shoreline master program. I move that we adopt this third reading and final passage.
Second?
Motion was made and seconded to adopt the third reading. Is there any discussion? Under discussion, Councilmember Ellis?
Yeah, I wanted to thank um, Director Scott for incorporating my edits to that. Um, and as I was rereading through it, um, came across um, that trees that are felled in shoreline buffers should be left in place. And that just caught my attention because as we are becoming more fire prone, I just, um, I would like this to be reviewed, and maybe it happens at the state level, that is there a size of tree, like a bigger sized tree that is best to leave in place rather than a bunch of small brushy trees? Or just in in terms of their fire potential and, um, and as with climate change and more forest fires happening, um, that might be something that we revisit down the road.
Okay.
God, it's on with him. He said, can you unmute?
Yep, I'm unmuted. Thank you. Um, yes, you are correct. That is reviewed at the state level. That is a state requirement.
You got it.
Can you hear me okay?
Usually that nature answers your question. Usually, in riparian zones by the water, there's a certain time type of of um, fauna that just develops there automatically.
Can you hear me okay?
Willows and
Yeah.
Things like that, that are uh, li- did you get Lisa on there?
Can she talk out of the owl? Can you maybe select the owl then? The TV might be muted.
Anyway, I I I don't uh, th- there's, there's a lot of times there's big trees there, but there's the the type of brush that's usually in a riparian zone is pretty natural.
Right, but we're moving to drier, hotter summers, and the fire load is, um, perhaps more problematic, especially with a lot of smaller stuff left on the ground. Um, I just, you know, I think it's important for us to look at this. Part of the shoreline includes the area around Aberdeen Lake. And it quickly goes from that shoreline area into forest land. And, um,
Excuse me.
So Lisa's replied with a comment, her because of the volume, she said it's reviewed at the state level and as a requirement, I'll definitely pu- pass along your message to DOE.
Is the TV muted?
Owl wasn't working tonight either, I don't.
There's, there's.
Oh.
I just heard something.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Now we're on the.
I can hear Lisa.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I can hear Lisa right now. She's talking. There she is.
Yeah, I was unmuted before. I'm not sure why you couldn't hear me. I was talking. But yes, this is definitely Liz, thank you. This is definitely one of those state requirements, and it is viewed at their level. And I, like I mentioned in the chat, I will definitely pass this along to DOE as a comment, but I think what it does is in the shoreline area in particular, it promotes growth when you leave um, fallen trees in place. Um, and I think that's what they were heading for, is more growth around the shorelines. But again, I will definitely pass along your concerns to Department of Ecology.
Thank you so much, Director.
You're very welcome.
Interesting.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, this is the third reading. Roll call vote, please.
Ellis?
Yes.
Francie?
Yes.
Gaken?
Yes.
Catchman?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Seedorf?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passes, Mr. Mayor. This will be ordinance six, seven, zero, six.
Thank you. Special committee item.
Yeah, we just have a couple items today. First one is a request from the city administrator recommending that the City Council authorize the mayor to sign the inter-local agreement, joining a regional abatement council subcommittee. I move that we accept this request.
Second?
Motion was made seconded to accept this request. Is there any discussion?
Yeah. Oh, it's, by joining this um, committee, we will be able to um, use our, there there are stipulations with the opioid settlement funds that the state of Washington received, um, from the pharmaceutical companies. There there's more settlements to come. Um, the city, I believe, i- it has received about like one point seven million, Dale, is that, Chief Green, one point five?
Over the course of seventeen years.
Over the course of seventeen years, it comes out to about thirty thousand, fifty thousand dollars a month, so there's, there's more to come, but uh, we had to join, um, some, or create or join an abatement committee, which will kind of oversee how we are spending the money, so we don't go out and buy, I don't know, a city administrator's massage chair. So we will have to spend it accordingly, and it has to be kind of reviewed. Other cities are, have already joined this as well as other counties, but um, they won't be able to um, block what we're doing or anything like that. They they, we all kind of agree to play nice, basically, when it comes to this funding. And ten percent of the funding that we receive, we have to set aside as part of the settlement as well, so we do have to put that into reserves, so. Um, are there any, are there any questions?
I have a couple. So when you put some money into reserve, is that the general fund reserve or what it's specifically set aside for?
It's specifically set aside for, that it's restricted to just use for administrative.
Administrative.
Yeah, it's administrative overhead that we have to set aside.
And when this is called an abatement council, is that the proper term for it?
Yes.
Because I usually think of that as abatement of the old, outdated buildings.
Sure, it's the opioid abatement, opioid abatement, yeah, council, committee.
Any further discussion?
I think it's more cost effective to do it this way than just trying to form our own. You know, I I threw that idea around. Um, I think it is going to be more time consuming to put together an entire group because it's very specific who can join this, or the the settlement gave the option for other cities to just kind of form their own, and then that gives us more autonomy and more independence to kind of spend the money as we seek that, to be able to make sure that um, it's used in a way that the City Council can get behind. We would have to form a whole committee of people, um, mental health professionals, addiction specialists, um, and then like a percentage, and so then the council wouldn't have as much say as how it could be used. It would just go to this committee. So this kind of puts it, allows the council to. I read that, right? Do they only meet one time annually? Yeah, and it's just the kind of, I think it's just more of a formality, but we all would make sure that we are in contact with one another and make sure that we are, um, everything's transparent as to how the funds will be spent. And we'll make sure that the council is included in that, as, you know, you guys are staying informed as to how the money will be spent, so, um. Thank you, Mayor. Yes.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Any oppose? The motion is approved.
You have a proclamation for Small Business Saturday.
Okay, I do. Proclamation, whereas the government of Aberdeen, Washington celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are thirty-three point two million small businesses in the United States. Small businesses represent ninety-nine point seven percent of firms with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for sixty-two point seven percent of net new jobs created since nineteen ninety-five. And small businesses employ forty-six point four percent of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas sixty-eight cents of every dollar spent at a small business in the United States stays in the local economy, and every dollar spent at small businesses creates an additional forty-eight cents in local business activity as a result of employees and local businesses purchasing local goods and services. And whereas seventy-two percent of consumers reported that Small Businesses Small Business Saturday, twenty twenty-two, made them want to shop and dine at small, independently owned retailers and restaurants all year long. And whereas Aberdeen, Washington supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations ac- across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I Pete Shave, Mayor of Aberdeen, Washington, do hereby pro- proclaim November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three as Small Business Saturday and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Confirmed this twenty-first day of November, twenty twenty-three. I would entertain a motion to.
I move that the council further supports your proclamation.
Second.
Thank you. Motion was made and seconded to support this proclamation. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. I'll move on to public comments. Anyone in the public now would like to speak, come up to the podium? Okay. Uh, I will offer, open the floor for the good of the order.
Okay, um, I've been doing cleanups for about a decade in our watershed. Going out on Sundays, or a different day on the weekend. Going out on Sundays or a different day on the weekend, uh, and just cleaning up the garbage that's in our creeks. And this Sunday, I went behind seven eleven and removed seventy-nine pounds of garbage. And from the composition of the garbage, it was all from seven eleven. There was hot dog wrappers, coffee creamers, uh, blue little sanitary holder things and even a delivery ledger from seven eleven. And like, it's all bags of garbage that somebody's gone through and left on the creek there. It's been happening for years. And I've cleaned it up many times. It was.
Which seven eleven?
Bonne Street, Bonne Street, Garland.
So with, based on your observation, somebody's taken out garbage out of the, like the seven eleven dumpster?
Yeah, very good.
Aren't they supposed to be locked?
It's, yes, they are supposed to be locked. So thank you for the heads up. Well, um, I'll talk to code compliance about that.
Oh, great. So I lodged a, a, a request from them a couple of weeks ago.
Oh, okay.
And I cleaned it up myself.
Okay.
Well, half of it. There's still a lot of garbage. But I'm planning on weather permitting on Sunday, going there, finishing it. Cause it is
I fairly recently brought that seven eleven dumpster issue up to code enforcement. So there might be some level of enforcement that he's working on.
I hope so.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else for the good of the order? Councilmember Katsman?
Just a reminder that there is a fifth Wednesday this month, so we are going to meet again on the twenty-ninth, which is a week from tomorrow at six thirty. And then uh, we should have a budget ready, but also be patient because of the Thanksgiving holiday. We will not get our meeting materials until the Monday prior. So you will not have them over the weekend. Lots of reading Monday, Tuesday.
Councilmember Ellis.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I wanted to thank all the citizens who ran for public office and all the people who voted. Um, it's so important to stay involved and for citizens to let your elected people like us know what your priorities are and become involved with others. There's so many ways to um, work together and even solo to make Aberdeen a better place. And I wanted also to thank current council members. Um, I know we, we give up a lot to be here every two weeks and we often do things in between our meetings that um, help constituents and further the city. And um, I appreciate the opportunity to work with everybody. I hope someday we will sit at a table where I don't have my back to half of the, half of my council members. Um, but I wanted to wish you all a very safe and happy Thanksgiving. And again, to staff, um, you guys rock and enjoy your time off. And uh, we'll come back and keep up the good work.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember?
I don't know if this is out of order or not. Did you want us to have a motion to change the last meeting in December to the December twentieth?
If you want to bring that up now.
I'd like to move that. I know you'd uh, talked, we discussed that earlier. I'd like to move that our final meeting of twenty twenty-three be on December twentieth, which will be a week after our December thirteenth meeting, but then we would not have a meeting on the twenty-seventh of December.
That's correct.
Second?
Motion was made and seconded. Move the final council meeting from December twenty-seventh to December twentieth. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. So that'll make sure that we get the bills paid and that things like that, but yet have the whole week off between Christmas and New Year's. Might, that might be a little more pleasant that way. So happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Was there anything else uh, for the good of the order from anyone?
No. I, I would like to thank the Public Works um, crew, uh, the Public Works team. Um, they performed um, a cleanup of the homeless encampment um, a couple of weeks ago. So uh, those guys work really hard. They have to see a lot of things and experience a lot of things when they're doing that. So I really appreciate them uh, showing up every day. And uh, yeah, so thank you to Director Sanger and his team and and Mike Brandich as well. So.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
I move to adjourn.
Motion was made.
And seconded.
And seconded. That we adjourn, if there's no objection, we are adjourned. Sorry, I threw it at.